Testing 123. This will be the February 17, 2016 City Council Regular Meeting.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting in the City Council of Satellite Beach, February 17, 2016, approximately 7:00 P.M. Will you please join Councilman Montanaro for a short prayer and a pledge?
Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. Please guide us in the decisions that we make for our city and our residents. And please watch out over the armed forces, the men and women who are serving all around the world. Please make sure that they stay safe and get home safely to their families. Amen. Do you join me in the pledge?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dominic. Moving on to Agenda Item 3, Citizens' Comments for Non-Agenda Items, and the floor is now open. Here in Nunn, close the Citizens' Comments, come back to City Council Comments. Let Councilman Montanaro speak since he has a few pages here.
Well, actually, it's good to be back. I missed a couple of meetings, and I was in Tallahassee both times doing city business. But I'll tell you, it was probably the most productive receptive trips I've ever made to Tallahassee. I don't know if it's because the session is early or it's an election year. I haven't figured it out yet. But I was up there two times. I missed the January 20th and February 3rd meetings. I'm a member of the Space Coast Advocacy Team for the Florida League of Cities, and I joined Mayor Kathy Meehan from Melbourne and Vice Chair Pat O'Neill from Rockledge on January 19th and 20th as we visited legislators up in Tallahassee. And we didn't just visit legislators that were from our area. You know, we had specific items that we were addressing for the state of Florida, too. And the items we discussed ranged from legislation concerning public records, attorney fees, relocation utilities, municipal election dates, transportation funding, vacation rentals, firefighter cancer, disability presumption, water quality and water supply issues, hydraulic fracturing, and public and private partnerships. That particular trip, I met with, we met with Representative, actually, House Speaker Steve Crisafoli, Representative Rich Workman, Tom Goodson, John Tobia, Debbie Mayfield, Renee Placencia, George Maritis, Greg Stube, and Senator Altman's Legislative Assistant, Lyndy Smith. Our efforts helped produce a unanimous vote in the House Government Oversight and Accountability Committee concerning the bill on the public records, which addresses attorneys that have found a loophole in how they can go in and request public records and then collect money from cities, your taxpayer dollars, for these frivolous lawsuits. And that was a 12 to nothing vote in that, in that one committee. And I also personally met with Senator Jeremy Ring and Representative Lake Ray discussing our priorities. And on that particular trip, the Florida League of Cities covered our expenses for going up there, so there was no expense to the city. I returned to Tallahassee on 2nd of February and attended a House Governmental Operations and Appropriations Subcommittee meeting, and I was one of 60 public speakers who filed to address House Bill 1021 on the public records bill. After much discussion, that bill also passed on a 12 to 1 vote. I was one of 10 people representing Brevard County cities and addressing the concerns of our cities. We talked about the same, some of the same issues, the cancer disability presumption, location utilities, municipal lien waivers, and opposing changings to municipal election dates. We supported the public records bill, private-public partnerships, vacation rentals, and implementation of Amendment 1. One of the issues that we talked about with Courtney Barker and Don Hughes was an issue on certificates of public conveyance and necessity for life support. It's a bill that's in Tallahassee that would directly affect how cities provide paramedic service and transport for their residents. We actually met with one senator's assistant, and he was the chair of the next committee that was hearing it in the Senate, and they weren't even really aware of what the implications of this bill was for municipality. So, you know, it's pretty amazing with the amount of stuff that goes on up there, how they're not tuned into exactly everything that's going on. And this copy that I'm reading from is on that table over there if anyone needs a copy of it, and it's also going to be submitted for public record. So, one of the legislators, and I'll close with this, he commented and said, "It's important that you're here to articulate your issues because if you're not at the table, you're on the menu." And that's what happens in Tallahassee. A couple other things I have here, too, and I don't know if anybody saw this. This was in the February 7 newspaper, and it was the intercoastal fair results for schools. And it shows just a bunch of different things that were awards that were awarded, and it's amazing how many went to Satellite and DeLorean. I mean, if you look at these, and I'm going to submit these for public record, too. They were in the newspaper, but it's amazing how many awards they won. On the 13th of January, I attended, along with Councilman Osmer and Courtney, the DOT meeting that we had up at the county office building with Commissioner Kurt Smith and representatives from Patrick Air Force Base and DOT, and it went very well. And I think we need to thank Courtney for articulating the position on the sidewalk that's going to be going through the north part of Satellite Beach and through Patrick Air Force Base. She's been the champion of making this happen, and I want to thank her for that because I don't know if most people know, but you're the one that was the impetus behind all of that. And we also did, while we were up there, Courtney and I met with Devon West. She's that Altman's Legislative Assistant, and we talked about a pilot program for the climate resiliency strategies. You know, we've implemented the AAA's here in Satellite Beach. We were one of the first communities in the state that did that. And it's to look at some kind of a program for a cost-benefit analysis, to look at the legal framework and, you know, what it's going to entail to move forward with some of these things that we're looking at. So, we could be a pilot program in the state in doing that. And I also have information here that has all the priorities from the League of Cities and a couple of pictures. I'll turn that in. The last thing I have that I want to bring up under my council comments is, the Thursday after the last meeting, I called Lenore, as I usually call, to find out what happened at a meeting if I'm not here. And Lenore went through the whole agenda with me on what happened, and we got to board appointments, and I learned that we had removed a board member from the Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory Committee. And I looked at that as, when I got home, I actually called Ed Kinberg because I had some questions that I needed to ask. I looked at his attendance prior to me leaving to go to Tallahassee, and I saw that he had missed some meetings, but I wanted to hear from Ed and ask him, you know, what had transpired. And I, from the conversation that I had with him, I think when we call our volunteers, because that's what we all are, volunteers, and when we call our volunteers, we ask them if they want to be reappointed, but we probably should be asking another question as the, as the city, saying, "Look, you know, I've noticed if I'm the one making the calls, whether it's the person from whoever is the city's person on that board making the call," the question should be asked. "I'm noting on your attendance here that you've missed several meetings. Can you make a commitment that I'm going to go back and the city clerk is going to articulate to council that you want to be reappointed to this committee, but, you know, with these attendance gaps that you have, are you going to be able to make the meetings in where they're extenuating circumstances?" And when I talked to Ed, according to Ed, he had notified the chair on one instance that he was going to be gone. And at all of the other meetings that he missed, he told whoever called him that if there was a problem with a quorum, he would do something to change the business arrangements that he had. So, I think we prematurely took him off of that committee. I think as a volunteer, we need to be asking better questions, and I'd like to make a motion to reappoint him back to that committee. I think we've given everybody else the opportunity to get a phone call, and we didn't do that with him.
I think, too, though, we can re-appeal. He hasn't been reappointed. There was no motion to reappoint him. Okay?
Okay.
So, we could use a motion to reappoint him, and his term doesn't expire until, if I'm not mistaken, until after the next council meeting, which we appoint to boards on the first meeting of each month. So, my suggestion would be is, since he's still on right now, he's not off, that all we need to do is put him on the agenda for when we appoint to boards, because right now, he's not off the board. His term doesn't expire yet. So, I think we bring that up as we do because we have to appoint him.
At the first, the first of the month?
The first of the month.
And I think we, I think we need to ask the questions, and in asking that question, we could say, "Look, we're going to go back to council, and we're going to say that you want to be reappointed, and you're going to make an effort to get to the meetings. And if the council sees in the next nine months or so that you're not attending the meetings, we're going to take you off the board prior to your renewing again." I mean, it gives us the ability of seeing if they're really interested in being on the board. And like I said, we're all volunteers, and they're all volunteers, too.
I can do that. I'll make that commitment that I'll, if I see that attendance problem, and if any of you see an attendance, too, problem that maybe I didn't see, you know, please call me, and I will, I will make sure I call that person, and then I'll let you know individually how that goes. So, I'll make that commitment that I'll go ahead and do that every time we go through a board of reappointments, just so you have that information for your, you know, and then you can make way more informed decisions at the time of your appointment.
And again, the motion was, the point, the other one, is not to take him off because he wasn't off yet.
Okay.
So, he could still be reappointed on the first meeting.
Okay. Any further?
I apologize for that. I just wanted to make sure that you knew that. I understand attendance was an issue for you all, and that, those questions should have been asked. I apologize for that. I'll make sure that happens in the future.
I would just add one thing that Council brought up was that meeting we had at Patrick. I saw it was also in the paper just recently where they were addressing, again, where they were talking about they were working with Patrick Air Force Base and getting it done. I've attended a few meetings there at Patrick and run into Colonel Wallace there a few times, so it is on their agenda. It is a watch item that they are talking about, and they are deeply interested in it. So, I know we had that first meeting, but it does have a lot of traction. Again, I think I read it in the paper, and I know at Patrick, there's still a lot of traction going on with it. So, thank you, Courtney, for, again, arranging that. I think that was the big thing, was to get all those people together in the same room to finally make a path forward. And like I said, it's got some traction. It's going, so.
It was, it was, it was hard to get DOT to understand the levels of bureaucracy of Patrick.
Right.
And, and so, we finally convinced them to do an easement in the meantime of doing a right-of-way. So, that made it go faster, I think, and so now it's in DOT's hands, and I think we're going to get an update on that in about a month, so we'll let you know.
Yeah, and I think the other part, too, is making DOT aware that this is not something you can run real slow because of the change of commands and changes going on, so that you need to make a decision and go forward.
DOT is very fast once they make a decision, so they do move, well, very fast for them.
Right.
But they, they do move quickly, and I know that they are working pretty expediently on this, so.
So, it's like I said, I'm glad to see it's still got traction. It's still moving, and I know it is a watch item, and that's all I have.
Just, just to counsel and to Courtney, I've been driving around some of our repaved streets, like Sunrise and that sort of thing, really turning out nice. I mean, you, some of these poor cities I drive through throughout the day that just, they're hurting, and I know they don't have the money to do it, and I'm just glad, and you know, I'd just like to say thank you to council for supporting this whole process and to Courtney because it's, it's making a difference. People are seeing it, and it's just nice to be in a position to do this, so.
Well, when you see a public works employee, thank them because they're working very, very hard right now this year. This year is the year of public works. A lot of work.
Day that you're all on that park, too, so thanks, man. We appreciate it. At least I do, and I'm sure you guys at council does as well. That's all I have.
I'd like to follow up with Councilman Montanaro's comments on the attendance issue for these boards. The handbook allows for excused absences, and it is a very, very, very simple process to get your absence excused if there is an individual who doesn't even have enough interest to go through those nominal motions. They don't have to be at the meeting. They just need to be excused, and there is no limit on the number of excused absences. Now, I'm aware that I come from a background that's a bit more regimented than a lot of folks, but I just don't see where that's a hard process to adhere to. Carrie, thank you for that beautiful dog park sign.
Do you like it?
Because it looks lovely. And while I was down there, I took a long, slow drive along that entire habitat area, and it is really a mess. And at our next council meeting, I would like to ask the council to add clearing that out as one of our goals for 2016. It really needs attention. And I will say that back where I live, I've always been treated to just unbelievable amounts of wildlife. I see less and less, whether they fly, swim, crawl, or hop. And when you look at that area back there, it's real clear to see what the problem is. So, I'd like to add that to our next agenda, just adding that as a goal.
It looks like we do have a wide agenda for next time, don't we, on the second?
We can easily add that, yes.
Can we add, maybe Allen give a report on, you know, what their status would be on how they would do it?
Yes.
Okay.
And Mark, the CEPA paper is coming along nicely, and I will admit that in all the times I've heard you speak about CEPA and all the times I've touched on it, I really never understood the concept. And then finally, one night, I'm lying in bed in the dark, and all of a sudden, it just came to me, and I said, "That's it." And from that moment on, I was able to take this paper and turn it into something really useful that explains everything. So, I think that when I'm finished, you're going to be very pleased, and you'll be able to take that paper anywhere and give people a full picture of what we're doing.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
It's got a great title already.
I agree with you on the having attended meetings on the agenda. I mean, the boards have to exist for us to help the city go on. And call, I mean, I think there's kind of a balance we have to come to there. And I know everybody are volunteers, but we can't have a board not function because people are not coming. That's why we have the board, so.
Can I ask a question? If we have a person who calls to see if they're coming to the meeting, and they say they're not coming to the meeting because they have another commitment or they have something business, is that excused?
Yes, and the charities to get that reported on.
Obviously, there's something falling between the cracks here because the information that I got is that was articulated, and it's not getting, whoever it needs to get to.
The chairs need to be reminded of their responsibility in that regard.
And I think we, we can, we can discuss how to record that better, and I think we definitely have an opportunity to have the discussions with the members better. And, you know, we also have the opportunity, if we see a pattern, to call and say, "Hey, you know, we really need you at these meetings," so we'll manage that better. That was really a drop in the ball on our part, and we'll make sure.
I mean, this is an individual who's been on the board for six years. I mean, you know, things come up in people's lives, you know. We have to be able to deal with it.
Shell Street, great. Sorry, we got rained on for our little picnic, but I'll tell you, it was very interesting being there and just seeing the number of people that are now using the outside area for food and entertainment. It was, you know, I think a great project, and we worked great with the Allison's and Allen, your guys did just such a great job. It was nice. Sorry it rained, but it was still a good turnout there. So, at the League of Cities, I happened to run into the representative from FPL, and he asked me, "Well, how's everything going?" And I just kind of smiled, and I said, "You owe us a visit." I said, "Shell Street got done, but I can tell you, our Public's Work Director and everybody, we don't like things getting lost on people's desks. It caused the city to look bad when we're doing projects." So, he got my point there. But I also asked him to come and talk to our Community Advisory Board to explain to them why they're really not interested in putting underground power. He told me some reasons. I said, "I think it'd be great if you came." And then I told him about South Patrick. I said, "You know, I know you don't have to tell us. It's not our project, but we really need to work together." Because if he knew how many phone calls, I mean, I've gotten, and I know everybody else you see gets asked, "What in the world's going on there?"
It looks horrible.
And I said, "It looks terrible."
Horrible.
And he said he would, and I said, "I think you owe it to us that if you're going to do something in our city, that you need to come, and maybe we don't agree, we can't do anything about it, but at least we know how to answer the questions to the citizens." So, if we could.
Mr. Bart, his last name's difficult, Getchins. He's coming actually to our Sustainability Board Wednesday to talk about their solar initiatives, because if you didn't know, FPL actually does have a lot of solar initiatives. But, so, he's obviously very willing to be out in the community and speak with us. We did call him, or I did, about the Shell Street issue. We will be calling them soon about the soccer field lighting issue. So, that's, they're just not on our time, and it's difficult to coordinate projects with them, so.
I think if we can meet, yeah, if we can meet with him and maybe change that when he sees what, you know, time is important as, and projects that he does through our city that we'd like to know before and then, you know, after.
It's not just this area, either. We had the same issues, and might as well, if you talk to any other city, they'll have, they'll tell you the same horror stories.
So, he said he's willing to come to the Community Redevelopment Advisory Board to speak to them about underground power and why and so forth, so I think we need to use him. That's all I have. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 5, City Manager's Report. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. Since we're still on FPL, or we just talked about them, I'm just going to go ahead and this, we are experiencing the third rate decrease, by the way, because of the gas plants. So, if you didn't know that, FPL has been decreasing rates, and they've sent us the notice for the third decrease in the last two years that we'll be experiencing because of the gas plant transitions. The other thing with FPL is the, they have received numerous awards, actually, for the hardening that they're doing across the state, and part of that, if you didn't know about South Patrick, that is a hardening project. So, it looks terrible, in my opinion, but that's, it is for a reason. It is to keep the electricity on, basically, during storms. So, moving on to the events, we have a lot of events coming up. This is the time of our, of year that, well, I think the Rec Department's busy every part of the year. They just move from different, one, one type of busyness to another type of business. But on February 19 through the 21st, for this weekend, we'll have the Locals Only Surf Fest at Pelican Beach Park. This is, the event is sponsored by the City of Satellite Beach, Long Doggers, and Villain Clothing. And then on the 20th, you'll see the inaugural, Satellite High School's inaugural antique car show, and that's at the Schecter Community Center from 9 to 3, and I think that's to raise money for the band uniforms, if I'm not mistaken. And then we have the Samson's Island Open House on the 27th from 9:30 to 2:00. We will be doing the free boat transportation as well for that. And then on the 27th, also, we'll be having the Beachside Little League Opening Day, in case you have not enough to do that weekend. On the 28th, the Satellite Beach Line Club's annual car show will be from 10 to 2 at the Schecter Center. So, there's going to be a lot of cars in the City of Satellite Beach for the next couple weeks. So, that's very exciting events. If anybody says there's nothing to do in the City of Satellite Beach, you can show my City Manager Report. As for informational items, I did want to mention with regard to the Shell Street opening, since it did rain, we are going to have another celebration on the 12th. So, if you want to come out and hear the band and be outside without having to shove yourself underneath the little things because it was raining, come back out again. We did invite the Women's Club again. They were very excited to see the sign. It was part of their newsletter, and they mentioned that at the last meeting.
Is that March 12?
Yes, March 12. We started at 4, right?
4:00.
At 1 o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay, 1 o'clock.
The band's going to start at 1, and then they're just going to play all day.
The band is going to start at 1 o'clock on the 12th and play all day. So, if you haven't seen it, Papa John's has done, Papa Gallo, sorry, Papa Gallo's has done an outstanding job, really incorporating furniture and a little outside bar and all kinds of new, new things out there to take advantage of the improvements. It looks really nice. I also wanted to mention that we have a, an emphasis currently on employee wellness, and in my report, you'll see a little email from the women of the, of our police department because they have stepped up the step challenge a little bit. We're, we're doing a step challenge with our employees as part of our wellness initiative. We receive about $5,000 in wellness funds each fiscal year as part of our insurance contract with Cigna, and we use that for wellness initiatives. Right now, we're doing a $1,500 step challenge initiative, and we were challenging employees and their family members to record their steps over a 10-week period, and we will give winners various prizes for that. So, the police department, not competitive at all, has, has stepped that up. So, you see there, it is working. We have a lot of employees excited about that. We issued pedometers to each employee, so it's, it's a lot of fun. Our employee HR Director, Thomas, is responsible for coming up with these things, and he's been doing a great job. Some of the other initiatives that we do for the step challenges, we are reimbursing our employees for 1, 3 to 5K. So, if they do that during that 10-week period, we will reimburse them. And we also pay for the city's health fare, which has been very well received. The last one was very busy. It was very big, and this year, we're going to make it even better, so it's, it's pretty exciting to see the progression in that, in that area. We did receive a thank you letter from Surfside Elementary for our financial participation in the Surfside Elementary Playground. If you didn't see, I know each one of you received one individually. We received one, or I received one as well. I wanted the community to see that, and if you didn't notice, their marquee on their sign, they did a thank you to the city up for that as well. I thought that was nice. I did want to mention that, oh, and then I wanted to move into the action items. I have one action item. We are requesting staff that we no longer bring RFPs to you for approval, and that's the actual request for proposals document. We would, what we would like to do is we normally bring a directional request to you, so we'll come to you for a direction to go out to RFP, and we would like to give kind of a bullet list of what we would like to include in RFP. And then if you, for example, I think like the Waze contract would come back to you because it's such a big deal, but for the smaller projects, like the design build for the skate park and some of these other things, we would like to just get your direction to go out to RFP, create the RFP and send it out, if you, if that's okay with you. And then, so at the time of direction, if you want to see it come back, just let me know, and we will bring it back to you. Otherwise, we would just prefer to just move out to RFP, if that's okay with you. So, we'd like to establish that process, if that's consensus.
No, we can't do it that way. Oh, wait a minute. Because it's an action item, let me open up for public comment, and then we'll bring it back. At this time, open up the action item for public comment. Here in Nunn, back to council. Our starter says we have to take a vote. We can't. So, move, have a motion, have a motion by Vice Mayor Breimer, second by Councilwoman Gott. Any discussion from council on this?
No.
How you like or to proceed or get an issue back, please?
I think it's reasonable.
Okay, bring it. Okay. Here in Nunn, further, Lenore?
Wait, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, no.
That's, go ahead and vote. I forgot.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Catina?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to let you know, since you did that, we will be sending out the skate park RFP. We would like to. We would like to create a, the selection committee solely out of the skateboard community. The staff will be there, of course, for technical advice for the committee, so the people that will be presenting the final recommendation to you will be people from the skate park community. We would also like to have the meeting restructuring the RFP to be a design build, so we would be requiring all the proposals, proposing companies, to come to a community meeting first as part of their proposal package, listen to the concerns of the community, and then put their design together, and then that would be taken to the selection committee. So we would like to schedule that March 22nd, that's a Tuesday evening. It would be very important to me, as well as the community, to see you there, if you can be there. And I understand some of you might not be in town, but if you could, for those of you here, I think it's important for the community to see you at that meeting, obviously.
If we're recalling this meeting?
This is the skate park redesign community meeting.
And so this RFP that's going out is for the redesign, the building, it has nothing to do with who's going to manage it?
No, this is just the construction. But that's just us, so we will be managing the construction in its entirety, yeah.
What time and where?
We will be holding, first, we're going to have a, a meeting with just the proposers and the staff at four, and then the meeting with the community's going to be at six. We, we normally have our meetings at seven, and I understand that, but we would like to have it at six because after the community meeting, we're going to be taking the proposers to the skate park itself, and we need to have enough time for them to do that. The skate park closes at eight forty-five, and we would like some of the skaters, if they're there, to have some chance to interact with the proposing companies.
One of the things on a design too, we had talked about?
With the lighting?
Yeah, if you look around our towns, you turn the lights on, people come, whether it's Olson Fields, you know, or whatever. We're going to build this really nice park. To me, it's always been, I think, one of our mindsets for that whole fields out there too, is to have lights on the soccer fields and so forth.
Right.
So because we're building a new project that hopefully lasts 15 years or better, new, then I think we need lights. You know, I think we've got to look at it to put lights there because people, let me, you know, upgrade the lights so they're, you know, good lights. You know, because the usage on something like that is generally after four o'clock, so I just want to make sure the lights there and the proposal are adequate for the money we're going to spend on the other stuff.
We can make sure that the proposers comment on their opinion of the adequacy of the lighting for what they want to do.
Especially in the morning, it's four thirty.
And where is the meeting?
We're going to have the meeting at the civic center. It's big enough, we think, for this. We'll make sure there's audio, microphones, and things like that.
Right.
And where's the board meeting?
It's going to be here in the city council chambers. That will be open to the public, if you would like to go to that, too.
Any further?
Good.
Thank you very much. Any more comments, city managers? Hearing none, move on to agenda item six, discuss, take action on the Roosevelt Avenue Improvement Project, change order number one. Courtney, or Allen, sorry.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Want to make sure. Before you tonight is change order number one for the Roosevelt Avenue Project. This change order comes from comments made by St. John's, the St. John's River Water Management District wanted some additional stormwater treatment. We put the bid out, and we didn't have the permit exactly in hand, and when we, when we got the permit in hand, there was some comments from them wanting the additional treatment. So we got with the contractor and came, made some changes to the plans, came up with the treatment that we needed, and they came back with a price that we weren't real happy with, and we negotiated quite a bit with them, and we got it down to the $32,832 that you see here. David King is here tonight to answer any questions related to the change order, and I'm also here to answer the, any questions.
Question on this change order, does this meet our future need for stormwater in that area or on that street?
The, the change, excuse me, David King with Puttenhampton Associates, the changes that were made were, what they, what, St. John's terms is urban retrofit, basically we were redoing an existing roadway. We didn't have to bring it up to today's standards, but they wanted, in, in the rules, you have to do, you got to better the stormwater. The stormwater improvements, the swales and the exfiltration trench that's being, that will be constructed, doesn't bring it up to today's standards, doesn't meet, you know, today's flood prevention and also treatment standards, but it does make it better than it was before, and the treatment that we get out of this will be eligible for your TMBL credits with your BMAP. So this isn't a required, it's a, it's, it's not a, it's not like a new development, let's say. It's, since it's a retrofit, it will be eligible for that, so you will get credit for that.
And so we don't have to come back here in three years to meet some deadlines or credit and tear anything up, do we?
No, there's, for the roadway, for the construction of the roadway, these, this amount of change is all, is all required by St. John's. It will be an existing roadway, and it is an existing roadway, so they couldn't require any additional requirements.
I have one question, David, too. The 1,800 feet of grass swale, is that between the sidewalk and the street in certain areas, or how is that going to impact some of the residences that live there? I mean, where is the actual grass swale going to be?
We know, past experience, swales aren't the most popular thing in Satellite Beach, but we did choose to locate a swale and, and agree to it with St. John's on the south side of the road. Those are all the side yards, if you will. The city had already committed to, in building the wider sidewalk on that side of the road, between the road and the, between sidewalk and the road, that was going to be landscaped, and it was going to be under city maintenance. So in those areas that we can construct a swale, we're deleting some of that landscaping, putting that swale in there. So it won't be anybody's front yards like it was in previous projects, where, again, where it wasn't popular, it's on the side yards, and in the areas that the city are maintaining.
So it's going to be somewhat similar to what's going on in Alcastia as far as...
Correct, side yards, yeah.
Good, thank you. Any other questions? At this time, thank you. I'll open up for public comment on agenda item six. Hearing none, back to council on the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order number one for the Roosevelt Avenue Improvements in the amount of $32,832.77.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Osmer. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Lenore?
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number seven, discuss, take action on resolution number 966. Jim?
Resolution number 966, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, establishing policies and fees for use of Satellite Beach recreation facilities, repealing resolution 964, and providing effective date. That's a reading, resolution number 966.
Thank you very much.
adopted resolution 966.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. At this time, Carrie?
The summary of this is, as our sport leagues, our youth sport leagues are growing, we're kind of outgrowing our own facilities, and Indian Harbor Beach's players are now participating in all of our Satellite Beach baseball and Satellite Beach soccer. So we've been, a couple of years ago, we were able to work out some arrangements with the Indian Harbor Beach to share baseball and softball fields with them, and this year we're able to make arrangements for them to share their lighted soccer field. So where soccer didn't have any lighted fields like a year ago, now they're going to have three to work on, so everybody's excited. But with the fact that we're sharing their facilities, it came to light to us that we're collecting player fees. They don't charge anything for, for these teams to utilize their facilities. They have no hourly fee that they charge these people, no per-player fee. So it seemed a neighborly thing to do, that's a good financial word, to, to share our, the player fees that we collect with those leagues. We don't collect, like the county does, a per-hour fee of $35 per hour. We do three or four dollars per player, per season. So our average collection for baseball for the year is about $2,300, and our average collection of soccer is about $2,000. So what we would be doing is figuring out how, what percentage of field time the leagues are playing in Indian Harbor and Satellite, and then do a percentage and give them a percentage. Baseball's going to be about 50%, and soccer's going to be about 10% because we have four fields and they have one.
Okay, thank you. Questions for that? No, very honest. Okay, at this time, open up for public comment on agenda item seven. Hearing none, back to council. Any... Just, I think the only thing that changed is on page five where it says the distribution, and other than that, nothing else has changed. Okay. One more?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passed. Thank you. Okay, moving on to agenda item eight, I'd like to open up a public hearing to discuss, take action on ordinance 1115. Jim?
Ordinance number 1115, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending ordinance number 836 of the City of Satellite Beach by updating the City of Satellite Beach Community Redevelopment Plan, providing for conflicts, providing severability, and providing effective date. It's the second reading of ordinance number 1115.
Motion to adopt ordinance number 1115, one second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Breimer, second by Councilwoman Gott. Any discussion from council? At this time, open up for public comment on agenda item eight. Hearing none, back to council. Any further? Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes, thank you. Moving on, still a public hearing on agenda item nine, discuss, take action on ordinance number 1117.
Ordinance number 1117, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending section 6-1 Satellite Beach City Code to add Pelican Beach Park and Pelican Beach Clubhouse to the list of public facilities where alcoholic beverages can be consumed, dispensed, and sold, providing severability, providing repeal of inconsistent provisions, and providing effective dates. It's the second reading of ordinance number 1117.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1117 on second reading.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Osmer, second by Councilwoman Gott. Further discussion from council? At this time, open up for public hearing on agenda item nine. Hearing none, bring it back to council. One question, Carrie, does this now cover everything?
Yes.
I just want to make sure if we didn't need to...
Add another one?
Well, something's slipped through the cracks, you know, on that, so just making sure. Any further discussion from council? Hearing none, Lenore?
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes. Motion passes, thank you. Staff, moving on to agenda item 10, discuss, take action on ordinance 1113. Jim?
Ordinance number 1113, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the future land use, infrastructure, coastal management, conservation, intergovernmental coordination, and capital improvement elements of the 1998 Comprehensive Plan as amended September 2nd, 2015, based on the city's updated data and analysis of the Comprehensive Plan, revising and updating existing goals, objectives, and policies in accordance with the mandate set forth in chapter 163 Florida statutes, authorizing transmittal of these amendments to the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, State Land Planning Agency, and other applicable agencies for review and comment as required by Florida statutes, providing a conflicts clause and severability clause, providing an effective date. It's the first reading of ordinance number 1113.
Thank you.
Note to adopt ordinance 1113 on first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by, I believe, Councilman Osmer. Okay, at this time, Mr. LaRue, welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just give you a little history, I think about three years ago, I've heard before you, before when we had the first time in the 2013, they had adaptation policies that were adopted, but just give you a little bit of history, where you actually had the climate-ready estuaries pilot project, which was 2009 and 10, and the steering committee on sea level preparedness was done, and you'll remember that when, most of you remember when the 2011 legislation passed, there was one piece that planners and I liked, and that was actually having the ability to be able to do the adaptation areas for cities that had the potential of sea level rise coming in, as well as other vulnerable natural events. And I think it was important to, to recognize, and in 2013, I remember the managers saying to us that we needed to have a little more public participation before we started really identifying what areas would be adaptation areas, and you had a period of, I think, overwhelming work from the Regional Planning Council, where they came in and used your MetroQuest and did a lot of things where people were able to give input in terms of the types of storm events that would be important, and, and the history of this, of course, is that we're not only had a grant to do what you did on the public participation, and actually gave the formulation of the policies that you're here today looking at, but also you're now in the sense of, one more historic thing, you're going to be able to do some GIS planning and another grant that allow you to look at the infrastructure. I didn't want to belabor the history thing, but it is important how all that fits together. And of course, to me, the important thing is the crux of the policies that you have, you're looking at storm surge, you're looking at flooding, coastal erosion, sea level rise, and of course, in your backup that I gave you for today, you have a good, to me, a good summary of the things that the Regional Planning Council did with you, so you can have that as far as how they came up with some of the, and the University of Florida was a participant, doing some of the projections of inundation and how that would be perceived, and of course, here we are with the 2015, 2016 Community Resiliency Comprehensive Plan amendments, came through your CPAB, and they had two good meetings, one in November and one in January, so that's why we call it 25, 2015, 2016. And I think sometimes the terms get thrown around. We use adaptation as, as what we talked about in terms of areas that were vulnerable to metal with the legislation, but I think climate resilience can also be something to look at in terms of the flexibility of how you look at things, when you look at climate change, the natural disasters and the impacts to that. A good part of your, your participation with people is what they thought in terms of vulnerability, what things were important to them in terms of worried about natural events, and when you have the adaptation, again, you have particular areas, geographic areas, that would be subject to some of these natural events, and I've not seen that placed that way, so I thought it was good, because those of us that are planners throw around the word sometimes, adaptation and resiliency, but I think resiliency covers a broader range of things that we have. This is, of course, the adaptation action area policy that, I mean, state legislation that gave us the act itself, and of course, it's in the coastal management element, and that's what we were able to derive our policies from, from that. And of course, the number one policy that we had in 2013... And of course, the number-one policy that we had in 2013, we have, and now we're changing that from that standpoint, that's the basis, the foundation of being able to initiate a public process. And if you think about it without belaboring it, you did initiate a public process to do what we're talking about, and the culmination of that are the amendments that you have in front of you. And that's the objective and steps that we're taking after the 2013 approval was with your input and your surveys. And now we're getting into the highlights of the policies that you have in front of you tonight. I would say that the importance of the policies for tonight are that we were pinpointing from the materials that were presented by the Planning Council. And the two adaptation areas that become part of the policies are your Policy 1.14.3, which depicts the inland flooding adaptation area, and it's a designation for being able to prioritize infrastructure funding and policy implementation for the alleviation of flood and improvement of mitigation projects, protect public and private property, and to protect the safety, health, and welfare of the citizens. And the areas that are depicted are the areas that appear in your policies. In fact, if you'll turn to 5-10 in your policies itself...
What number was that?
5, page 5-10, and it's Policy 1.14.3. That's in the coastal management conservation area. Now, the depiction of that, of course, is showing that you're located within the coastal high hazard area, FEMA one-year flood zone, or areas which are expected to be inundated with water using the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, high projections for the 2070 plan horizon. And if you look at page 514 in your packet, you see there, that was presented to the CPAB with the median projections and what the board came with. In fact, if Lenore is going to pass out, the change, the change that was recommended from the CPAB is that you're looking at capital infrastructure improvements that will be done based on the projections that would be 2070, but would be the high projections by the Army Corps of Engineers. And that's the one difference that you have in your packet versus what we're talking Now, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers projections with a high rate of curve is based on data that, in fact, the University of Florida did a good bit of this work in order to forecast in the future what could possibly be problems in terms of the inland flooding. And that's, that's one of the areas that we're concerned with from that standpoint. And the other adaptation area, which is, in an erosion standpoint, is on the coastal area, is the second area, and figure 5.1 detects both of those areas in terms of the policies that would be on the major part of our thrust of our policies. The erosion policy 1.14-11 is the one that's the erosion adaptation action area, which is, of course, includes the areas east of A1A that are located or surrounded by coastal high hazard area, or located within the FEMA 100-year flood zone, or parcels that are prone to erosion. Now, you saw in the backup that the Regional Planning Council did, they determined basically these two areas to be your two adaptation areas. And so, the map that you have is the 5.1 now demonstrates the fact that the two areas would be what we're looking at, which would be vulnerable in the 2070 in projections for inundation. And where this comes into play is that if you're predicting or trying to project what possible things you would do from a standpoint of infrastructure improvements, or to bolster some of the infrastructure that would be in these prone areas, it was a reason why we chose to go with the high projections, because we're already showing in terms of some of the input, and you'll get some input tonight, that the intermediate was perhaps not taking into account what could happen in terms of the inundation of the water. And the other thing that we've tried to do with the other policies that are included is to give you a chance to get grants and different types of tools that we could use. And you, without going over each of those, those are the other policies that are in there. If there are any questions from the council, I'll be able to answer those, perhaps, or we can do public input and then come back to questions. Now, here's what the process will be, is the plan amendments will go, like they always go, to DEO for their review and comments. And we've talked with them a little bit on the phone, and we think they'd be positive. And then they will come back to us with comments, and it'll probably be in April, May time period, which we will have a second public hearing, which would be what we call the adoption public hearing for the comp plan amendments, like we've done before. I didn't mean to go so fast on this, but at least you've got an idea of what they are on the amendments, and we'll have some input from the public.
Thank you. Council, questions? At this time, open up for public comment on this agenda item.
Ken Lindeman, 485 Pointwood Avenue. I appreciate and thank you for the review of the history. It's important, I just wanted for the record to mention that there is a 5.5-year history. In 2010, there was a sea level rise Subcommittee on the CPAB, and it was really pretty remarkable in that respect, to see how we were able to produce a plan for moving forward. There have been approximately 15 members on the CPAB since that committee, give or take. I don't have the exact. And I want to thank all of them, and Mr. LaRue, of course, for being on this all the way, the East Florida Regional, the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council on Terra. Those 15 members, really, some of them went to the lot, and it's very important to remember them, all of them. And every single one of them, with one exception, was a yes vote on every single, every single one. We've gone through the record. There were many votes on different comp plan issues, including the coastal element. And it was just, it's probably worth noting, if there's blowback later, that it was 61, 70, 60, 61, all the way through, for five and a half years, with 15 members approximately. Thank you. Thank the staff. And I wanted to suggest that it might be very useful, and I think it would be a good expenditure of city funds, if one or two elected officials from the city could go down to one of the South Florida Regional Climate Change Compact meetings. The South Florida Regional Climate Change Compact is an extraordinary body. Four counties have their seal on it. Over 20, possibly 30 municipalities have their seal on it. They have an annual conference now in December that is attracting 400 to 600 people and giving national and international attention. And when you drive down I-95 and you cross into Palm Beach County, it's a different political landscape. There's a deep conversation going on. And thank you all for bringing some of that up here.
Ken, thank you very much for your hard work that you've also put into this all the years.
I was going to also say that, Mayor. The, you know, our resiliency initiatives are, in my opinion, probably the most important thing we are working on right now. It is the way that we will be able to protect our residents' future and help plan our city through, you know, this issue. It all started with two people on our CPAB that thought this needed attention, and that's John Fergus and Dr. Lindeman. And without their, you know, constant attention and, you know, work on this, we wouldn't be where we are today. So I want to just thank you both for your efforts. I also wanted to mention, since, I have the microphone. At the initial meetings, the, when we first recommended the policies to go to CPAB, we were recommending a median projection that you see in the plan. At the time that I was, when I went to the first CPAB meeting, I was expressed concern as a city manager for the politics regarding that. However, as a city planner, and always, you know, once a planner, always a planner, looking at this, this is our future, and this is something that we need to address. So I would recommend that you do accept the CPAB's recommendation to change it to a high projection. I think with you have an entire board, you know, with a majority, recommendation to actually go to a higher level of analysis, I think that speaks volumes of the concerns, you know, that we're facing. So I do think we should accept the recommendation and move forward with what they proposed.
One thing I'd chime in on that is that we also have five-year intervals where we can check things, and that's important. You've probably noticed that, but that gives us a chance to be able to do that as well. I'll be quiet, sorry.
What is the...
John Fergus, 135 Maple. Since it's come up a couple of times now, that high projection sounds a bit draconian or something, but there's a lot of science behind it. And if it makes you feel any better, that is what a massive study done by the compact last year, that was their, their recommendation. And when you go to the median level, that's kind of like a 50/50, and I don't think anybody's going to cross the road, you know, it's, you want to be a little more planning for something. What is it? Plan for the worst and hope for the best? And that's kind of what's here. If you plan for the best and you get the worst, then you're in trouble. So there was, that was the...
What would you say, at least half the discussion was on that?
One value. What do we use?
We went with the high based on what he was talking about. And the reason you had the inserts today is that the 5.1 map represents the high, which you did not have, I wanted you to see them both. And the language for the median was, was west of South Factory Drive, so I wanted to make sure we moved that language out. That's the reason you have the text change, and so we would recommend the changes, include those two that I gave you.
Thank you. Comments? Public comments still open? Hearing any further?
Can I add one?
Ken, I'll let you, because you worked on this project, please.
I should have addressed this when I was up here the first time. Pardon me. I want to highly endorse what Mr. LaRue and Dr. Fergus mentioned. I also want to remind folks, of course, it's Dr. Fergus also. And retired Army. So... Excuse me. I've always told people you're retired Army. Oh, my God, I apologize. I know. I know what, okay. The IPCC, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, brings out these big reports. They won the Nobel Prize in '07 every six to seven years, eight years. You will hear all the time that they overestimate. The reality is, on sea level rise, on sea surface temperatures, and many other metrics we don't need to get into, six-to-seven-year interval, after six-to-seven-year interval, when you look back, the high end is what happened. And I can back that up quite easily. And it's, there's a massive literature, there's not a raging debate on this. I mentioned this, I believe, at a CPA meeting. A great resource, NASA Climate Web, just NASA Climate. It's NASA. It's not Greenpeace. And it's just data-driven. And they have, if you search their scientific consensus, they have an extraordinary webpage where every single major physical science society in the United States, for scientists, these are, these are beyond the blue ribbon, gold level. The AAAS, the American Meteorological Organization, the American Physics Society, they have all of their consensus statements. Getting high-level scientists on the boards of these organizations to agree on how to put in a light bulb, much less something like this, which gets them burned, is extraordinary. And these position statements have been present now for, in some cases, 10 or more years, 15 years. And they're not retracting, they're updating. NASA Climate Scientific Consensus, when you're dealing with someone who's getting, getting static information, please, I encourage you to take a look at that, and you can recommend that with great confidence. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public? Here are none, bring it back to council. Further council comments?
I look at this, and, you know, when we talk to Devin, this in the comp plan is going to be more influential in looking at that pilot program that we're trying to get. And this is the information that's going to raise the eyebrows, that are going to help us get it. So I think this is the way we should move.
I can say, as being the liaison on that CPAB for over the last year, if I had any doubts, they convinced me. I think, as they point out, there was a lot of deliberation, there was a lot of thought, a lot of discussion. I mean, it wasn't something that they went in very lightly. Hence why we ended up going over the year from November and then into January. So again, there was a lot of talk, a lot of depth, a lot of discussion that went into it, a lot of facts, a lot of information. So I was there personally, I watched it happen. They were very thorough, really in-depth with that. So like I said, even if you were a partial non-believer in it, they had me convinced by the end that this was the right way to go. I agree with the high end. They had all the right rationale behind it. Again, I think the science backed it up. And I think it goes, well, as they said, you do got to plan for the worst. And I think you can go back to even when we talk, every time hurricane season comes, and what does the governor tell everybody? All right? We're going to plan for the worst, get enough stuff to get you through for a few days, and hopefully, we never need any of it. But if by chance we need it, we're always ready. And I think that's where we really need to be as a city. We need to be ready for the worst, and we can all hope that it never happens. But we need to be prepared for it. But like I said, being there, I can say, you know, without a doubt, they worked very hard on it. Very well, very depth. It was very good, a lot of hard work in there.
My motion was to approve the ordinance on first reading, and I'd like to clarify that that ordinance refers to Exhibit 8 text amendments. And I'd like to clarify that Pages 510 and 514 are being substituted.
That's right. Thank you. Thank you. How many did you make the second?
Yes, second also.
Any further discussion?
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Staff, everyone, Mr. LaRue, thank you very, very much. John?
Thank you.
Doc, thank you. Appreciate the hard work, incredible amount of hard work. I'd call you Doc, John, but I know you'd get mad at us. But thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Gee, I don't know how to take that, John.
Moving on to Agenda Item 11, is proposed agenda for the next council meeting. I know we have that one addition. Any other additions that need to be there, or you would like, please, see Courtney? Moving on to 12, approved in a minute. Have a motion?
Move to adopt the minutes of the February 3 workshop meeting and regular meeting as submitted.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilman Osmer. Any discussion?
Should we be excused absences, or?
No further discussion? Lenore?
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passed. Any further business for the board, for the council? Here are none. Needs adjournment.